Father, we just thank you for the opportunity to, uh, to serve you and to serve the citizens of Silotaga. We ask that you would have your hand on this council and the members that'll be participating and the employees that'll be participating tonight to move the city forward in the way that is most pleasing to you.
All right, um, we're gonna go a little out of order with the agenda because some items are gonna take a little bit longer than others. We're gonna let the, some people go ahead and get up here and get out. So I would like to start with, uh, Taylor and Amber with municipal court. And it's item number two on the agenda, municipal court discussion to use funds from municipal judicial administration fund to, for temporary fill-ins due to understate.
Yeah, um, just this microphone, if you don't hear as well. If, this is, uh, this was an order, we've had times where there's been clerks about sick working the door and things, so I wanted to put this in place and then the judicial admin fund set by House Act, uh, twenty twelve, five thirty-five, which was signed into law in May, twenty second, twenty twelve. On page three of, of, of that act, specifically subsection E, it talks about the funds distributed pursuant to subsection D, including without limit to salaries, benefits of the court. Employees were necessary for the efficient operation of the courts in the circuit or other expenses that individually determine necessary by the society of the circuit court. But this is, this is used to benefit the court, specifically for the judicial administration fund. And rather than have to ask for any money from the general fund, that's what that fund's for. And at each court date, with the collection of court cost, that fund actually regenerates itself with every case it's adjudicated in front of, in front of our courts. So, I wanted to make sure that, if nothing else, that I just made sure you all were aware of where that was coming from financially, how we would fund that. And it's not a, you know, a usual circumstance, this stems from a, from the last court date where we had the lady who normally works at the door that was out with, with the flu. So we had to make the last minute audible to, to accommodate that. So, um, so anyway, that's what that was for and I, I just wanted to bring that in front of you all, um, just in the event you had any questions or, or whatnot, um, in that regard.
Can you touch on the plans as far as using that fund for, uh, this upcoming?
Yeah, yeah, um, like I said, this act specifically sets forth the abilities of the court to use this with overall enhancement benefit of the court. What I'd like to do is, is use some of it to, to, to fix this up, to do a remodel and overhaul on this relative to painting some carpets and things like that. The last time I was made aware and advised, there was about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in that fund that is earmarked for the judicial administration fund and it has to be used based on this for, for the court. So, you know, what I would like to make sure is that, that one, we utilize it, like I said, it's already a fund that, that regenerates itself each court date. And also, I also don't wanna run the risk of, of any state audit and beating funds and that's been there for a long time and not being used. So if we have it and it's available, you know, it's my, my thought would be to use it for the benefit of the, the court, which overall benefits the city.
Judge, when do you think you can get started?
Well, what we were gonna look at first of the year, get, get two or three bids, um, and, um, and just, you know, take the most economical in that regard and, um, look at, you know, look at starting something in February, March, what I was thinking, um, you know, so. I think it may be a good, good thing to do.
Good idea, good job.
Anyway, if you all have any questions regarding this order and how that's gonna be used, like I said, it's, it's a rare thing. It's something that we shouldn't have a whole great deal of, of absences. But if we get an issue on Tuesday morning and we got court at one on Tuesday afternoon, we gotta move quickly to make sure that procedurally we're, we're, we're in good shape and so that's why this came up and that's why this is what it is.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
All right, Steve, would you like to come up and talk about, uh, South Highland Park?
As y'all know, we came last year, um, and presented to y'all a budget to renovate South Highland Pavilion. Y'all approved the monies, but when we got our first bid to just paint the pavilion, it was nearly eleven thousand dollars. We thought we could do it better and cheaper internally. And since then, we've had to wait because as you know, we have two people that maintain ten parks. So we can only do these type of things when it's not grass cutting season or, you know, when our guys are doing something else. I've been asked several times recently when we're gonna start on that. And I reached out to the utility board who's supposed to be moving power to the pavilion, so obviously we'll need power to do what we need to do. And that's gonna be February before they can even get us access to power. So what we wanted to do, since the money was already approved, to appease the citizens in that area, is go ahead and get it painted, get that started, get the picnic tables and stuff ordered, and then we can finish our reservations once we get power and take it away. Industrial enamel will stick to it.
Thank you, Steve, I appreciate that update, you know, Brad's been wearing that. Um, I got a question though, is that something that you would update on the parking right place with Dave?
We can, for sure.
Yeah.
Usually when we do general resor, you know, renovations like we've done at the other park, we take pictures and put new signage up and hey, you know, make sure everybody knows that we are actually out there doing this.
You have to, good job, thanks so much for that update, Steve.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Steve. Um, Nate Oscar, would you like to go ahead and go about the FEMA assistance to firefighters grant toward the purchase of the new fire?
Yeah, so this is the, the continuing discussion of the fire, we're still just in holding pattern right now, waiting on Fire Truck Company to, to get us to a point where we can actually, if we can start about anything, uh, thanks to the lead times of, of where we are. But while we're waiting on that, we applied for the AFG grant last year to go towards the truck. We did not receive it, uh, we found out this past week that, uh, they're opening it in January, I don't remember the exact day, they're, they're reopening it again in January. And I think we should reapply for it. I guess, still have to talk with the grant writing company and figure out exactly what that dollar amount's gonna look like this year and all, all those types of things. And again, like last year, probably won't be for the a hundred percent of the cost, but we'll see, you know, see what we can get. I just kinda needed, we, we need to approve it, applying for it at next meeting, but I just kinda needed to get a, a nod to move forward on it and, and get the application processed and, and heading in the right direction to be approved next meeting and then, and then submitted thereafter. So just kinda wanted to bring that back to you, I mean, there's, there's nothing else at this point that I just feel like is, is pressing for this specific grant other than the truck. So I think it would be, you know, worthwhile to reapply and see if we can get it this year, even though we did last year.
I think it's no more than that, cause no money comes out of it unless you're awarded.
That's correct, yes, it's, it's a five percent match and a five percent grant writers fee if awarded, if it's not awarded, what they would respond to.
How much are we responsible for again?
Depends on level of the grant.
Yeah, it's, it's five percent, it's ten percent total, ten percent of the grant.
But Nate, what, ha- have we done anything, I know we had this conversation a while back, so have we done anything or put anything in place to plan for, to get a truck? Or all we've done is talk about it, so what have, what have we done?
So, so in the background, we've worked through all of the initial specs of what a truck would look like for us and, and they, we, we did that purchase agreement back, uh, a, a year ago now probably, or close to it. And that just basically held our spot in line and we're waiting for our spot in line to get, to get moved up far enough to actually do anything else with it.
So basically, we're on track to, even if we don't get the grant, we need to be planning to pay for it, but we are gonna get the truck, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, our, our, our spot's there and, and we're just in a holding pattern.
And did you say we don't have to worry about payment until arrival, or is that something?
That is correct, that is correct.
Have you ever thought about getting stock truck that's had some stuff that you want on it?
There, the fire truck world, there's not really such a thing as a stock truck per se. They're, they're all built to order and sometimes dealers might get one snuck in along the line that they turn around and sell, but the, it's not quite like a, go and buy it aboard at the car lot. I mean, there are used trucks and those types of things, but we, we generally have shied away from that because of the mechanical issues that come along with that and, you know, we're, every fire engine we buy, we expect to get thirty years of life out of it. And, and that's, that's the rotation we've been on and, and that's a good rotation for us and for a city our size and, and that's the rotation that I'm trying to take. I mean, we can talk more in a sentence when we get closer, closer to the point of actually, you know, signing a contract, but we, we haven't made it yet. But I do think it's worth at least applying for this grant and seeing if we can get something to put towards it.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, thank you.
Good deal, thank you.
Thank you, Nate, um, let's see, discussion to set public hearing to consider a permanent road closure of the road identified as Skyview Drive for January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
This is actually a recommendation from the planning commission, it's not a real road, it's a road on paper that doesn't really exist. Uh, and, uh, they want to close the road.
Just take it off paper? Anything we have to do?
We just have to have a public hearing to.
Set public hearing habit?
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, Jane, um, discussion for funeral resource specialist Jane McGee to authorize unused vacation leave resulting from dark departmental staffing shortages to be carried forward to twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, good afternoon. You should have in front of you the, uh, pay plan without the C T, E C T and with it.
Jane, we're talking about the, uh, vacation.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
We're getting this a whole, it's out of the way. I forgot, I had a number of things on the agenda tonight, sorry.
You're fine.
All I've been thinking about is the pay plan.
Jordan, come on.
Yes, I'm so sorry. So I will have to ask forgiveness because that is literally all that we have done the last two days. I do not have the list with me, I think you guys received the list on the vacation rollover. Yep, can I have that please, I knew you had it, thank you. So, um, you know, our policy states that we don't roll over and occasionally we're gonna have those times where there is a need. I did reach out to departments and most of these departments are short-handed that, that had the request. Because we're in the middle of a payroll cycle, I had to kind of do the up to scenario. These people may not actually have this much, some of them who have tenure could actually sell those back if they choose to and not knowing what they're going to do, I just had to go with the balance. So, uh, as far as the animal shelter.
Hang on a second, Jane, is there?
Y'all need to ask me something?
I'm looking at the list with Nate.
Okay. We're following.
Y'all continue.
Go ahead, go ahead, just wanna make sure. The animal shelter, you know, we've been short-staffed there for quite some time, they're not gonna be able, that's, that's a seven-day operation, so.
Shouldn't Miss Stephanie roll over automatically because she hadn't been here a year yet?
I don't know that she, I don't recall that she took any. She, when she emailed me back, she said that everybody would need to, so I just went, went by what she told me.
I thought she, I, in my mind, I thought she wrote, I thought if you weren't here, I thought we had something, if you weren't here a year, a year and under, it rolled automatically.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't know, I don't think so, I, she was hired, Nate.
Was that, do we have a policy along those lines? Do we have a policy along those lines that what she's talking about?
Well, he's talking about when we, uh, changed the, uh, six month, remember, we used to have to wait a year before you'd take sick or vacation time?
Right, because your probation.
He's talking about the first six months, we changed that, you get that year, you get that week after the six-month probationary and then you get the other week during, during the year, during twelve months, after twelve months.
So there's nothing in it about automatic rollover?
No, there's nothing in there about automatic rollovers. I think the assumption is made because of that rule change for the six months versus waiting an entire year. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned, I'm, I'm looking at the list here and I know different people have different issues. Some of these, we have departments that are shorter staffed than most and they've taken all their vacation and some of these have not. And some of these are fully staffed, I'm, I'm still, I'm having a hard time understanding, we're rolling vacation over everyone. We're rolling ourselves, I mean, we've done it the past two, three years.
Is there a specific department you're concerned about?
No, no, I'm concerned about all of these, because I know some, the P D is not on here and I know they're still understaffed, the clerk's office is not on, I know they're still understaffed.
They were all asking, I'm sorry, they were all asking, that's what we're not.
Kelly, did you have guys that needed a rollover?
I've got two that, we were talking about with automatic rollover, they've just hit their probation.
That falls into what I just explained.
But everybody else, if there's a station there that hasn't hit.
I'm just, I'm trying to get my ears correct, because he's kinda piggybacking on what I said and that, what Nate said about the automatic rollover, but you said there's no automatic rollover. So what is it we'll deploy even that's only been here a year or under when it comes time to roll over vacations or anything?
They can, they can roll over six months, they can roll over after, I mean, they can take their time at six months.
They can't do anything for six months?
No, they have to get through the probationary period.
So there's, okay.
Yeah, y'all approved the plan, I mean, y'all approved that.
So are all these, but some of these are not probationary period?
That's true.
Right, am I right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Animal shelter's been understaffed for, ever since she was hired. Court has been understaffed every year. Uh, I'm on there because I had three vacation days I wanted to take this week, I've been working on a pay plan. So I would like to take those because I'm here doing what I need to do. Fire, you know, some of those people, uh, may be able to sell some of these, which I explained earlier about this. I'm not sure if they're going to have to or not, or they're going to, so if Nate wants to speak about his department, he can.
That's fine, I'm, I'm looking at over seven hundred hours and we sell them at a new pay plan, you know, recommended new pay plan in January one and we sell them at a higher rate and that's
Well, that's true.
Pretty big number.
That's true. So if any of them would like to come and talk about that. Personally, I was gonna take mine in January, if I could, so, before that mutation.
They have their current rate?
My recommendation would be that they cash them out before the end of this calendar year.
And they could do that if you approved it.
I think that would answer your. That's, yeah.
Is that what you were doing?
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
That's fine. Hope that's okay with you guys.
Or use them at the pay rate at which they were earned.
Is there, is there a certain amount that we can't go over the rollover amount, Jane?
No.
Is it whatever?
How hard would that be out? Let me ask out, just because she'll, payroll and such, how hard would that be, like Lee said, to use them at the current, at the rate they were earned? You know what I'm saying? How hard would that be to drag? They need to do it before December thirtieth. But if they say they.
Of this month?
They need to sell it before December thirtieth. But say the thing, if we chose to, you can roll them, but whatever days you earned it, this amount, you have to take it to this amount, does that mean? So once the pay plan is enacted, they're gonna do it at a higher rate?
What do y'all wanna do? Do you just wanna have them sell it this year?
I think, I think, I think that there's no way you can.
I think that's more than fair, that's fair.
Or, or, or they can still use them because they're not gonna get paid anyway, so they either.
They just can't liquidate them.
Yeah, these can't be liquidated if they're rolled over, does that, yeah, they can't be sold back if they're rolled over, because some people may wanna take the time.
Somebody else wanted it.
I'm just, is that, is that?
You may roll them over for next year, but they have to use them.
Yeah, they have to use them, they can't sell. Is there any way to keep track of them, because I mean, some people may, they didn't get to take the time this year, they may wanna actually take their time, you don't wanna take it from them, but they can't sell them back, does that make sense?
They'll still get, once the pay plan is enacted, they'll get one. But they're taking, even if they take it, they're gonna still get paid. So my recommendation would be anybody that can sell, needs to have changed the paperwork.
Is that what we're agreeing to? I, I can do that.
I think the park issue, make their employees take their vacation hours, to be honest with you, but the council votes to, uh, Lou and Alex recommend making that happen.
Well, it's hard to do that when you are very understaffed.
Is that what we're gonna do, guys?
Yeah, I think so, sell them.
Okay. The COVID, the COVID, um, employee, first team employee.
Yes, we've done that for the last few years and I wanted to ask if you would consider doing that again. The good news is we haven't had to use that much COVID leave, so it's not gonna be that expensive for the city and I really have the, the new, the newest people, the newest hires in mind, because they do have to wait six months. They got COVID or, you know, COVID, that would be a problem for them, they wouldn't have any leave time and we, we've asked them, we ma, we mandated that they stay home for five days so that we don't infect everyone, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of the COVID leave policy anymore, Miss Jane, and here's the reason why. Because I know, uh, at school, we went back to using our sick days. We're, we're, the government's not giving us any more days or any more money to subsidize, so I won't be in favor of this COVID laws.
Whatever y'all decide, it's fine with me, just try and help the employees.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions concerning the COVID relief policy? Now, onto the pay plan.
I'm good with it. Okay, like I was saying, uh, you've got two sets of spreadsheets, without the E C T education line and with the E C T line. We were able to provide, uh, the cha, the requested changes yesterday at ten thirty A M.
Which one we talk about first, Miss Jane?
If that mattered, Nate. Uh, we provided it at ten thirty yesterday and, uh, I know Miss Alex tried to get, get through some of the numbers herself and then we had Sandy's help today, hone up until right before the meeting, they were working on it. So I do need to go ahead and let you know that there are a couple of little discrepancies because of the rush to get everything to everybody. We had about four people, four employees that were coded in the wrong tier as far as RSA, they should've been tier, tier twos or tier ones. And then we had, um, I think Alex went at three people that, uh, there was a question about whether their rate was too high or too low. Those need to be corrected.
First informant and fighter informant, one in each.
Yeah, there's not that big a difference, I don't know the difference, I don't know if you do, Alex, because I didn't get a chance to.
We do not.
Okay, so other than that, what questions? I mean, really all that we have done is, um, getting rid of, as far as without the E C T, we've taken that line off as requested, Ms. Ma'am.
Um, Jane, I have a question about the, um, about the, the education, the certification, training altogether. So like, on the lines wherein, and correct me if I'm wrong, like say with the fire department, police department, shop and stuff, stuff like that, where they get certifications and they get training, how many, how many certifications or how many trainings will equal up to a step? Or how many do you have to get to get credit for?
That's a good question, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Well, how, well, how do we know where to pin people at?
Well, if we, if we go back to talking about it without the E C T line, what we did with the folks in the street, uh, the shop and, um, yeah, the street and the shop, we moved them up a step.
But we, we took away the E C T, that bottom line, but people are still getting credit for education cer, certifications and training, right?
My understanding is that we just, we just handled the degree, we took all that off because that's what everybody thought that y'all requested.
That's, I, I thought we.
It was confusing, I apologize, but that's what we, Alex, what, is that, was that your understanding?
What was the question from Ford?
I thought that, let me, the understanding I had was to take away the extra line, because the extra line gave an additional four percent. But what you told me was they were still compensated at the top. So if they had education, certification or training, they got their step. But we also moved them down to the education line if they had some sort of education. And I asked you, I said, well, we already compensated them up here to give them however many steps that they were supposed to get and you said, yes. And that's why I asked, well, why did we drop them down to give them an additional four percent if we already compensated them up here?
I, I think we addressed that and I think y'all called that double dipping and I understand that concept and that just, that wasn't really the intention. It was just, you know, going by the percentages and, and, you know, what the worth of a degree is. We've accepted the fact that you don't want the line, we took it off and, uh.
But the line, just, the line was extra. People were still being compensated in the pay plan, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's, that's what I'm asking, so when we compensate, um, people for the education, certification and training, let's take the education out, you know, let's take the college degrees out, so I don't know, Nate, I'll pick on you. So what are some of the certifications that firemen can get to get them an extra step or to get them moved over to the pay plan?
Yes, you're asking about set parameters, so if we reach this.
Yes, but when you tell us what those certifications are, how many of those certifications will get me moved over?
I only have one copy, but there's a list for each, each grade and each position within.
So, so tell me, how many, how many of these can I get to get?
All of those, you, if you're, if you're a firefighter and you're in a firefighter grade, you have to get all of those bullet pointed.
To get what?
To drop down to the blue.
But?
Or to move two percent.
Yes, or to move the two percent, because we, we do one of her, yeah.
So, 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 so that's, you have to complete that entire list of those bullet point certifications, each one of those is its own unique class to, to, to move. And then if you get promoted, you can see here, there's required classes to be promoted, which are not in, those are separate, those are required to be promoted, and then if you're, as a, as a fire lieutenant, then you have to get that list.
To get?
To get it to the next grade.
Okay, so is there one of these for everybody, is there one of these for the, the other departments that don't have education, well, not education, because this is education, I don't want to sound.
Certification.
Yeah, certification, is there one of these for the other departments that require certifications, like for the police department, the shop, industry? Did everybody submit one of these?
I'm still waiting.
But, but am I making sense?
You are, and that's why I said we're not ready, I have all the information from all the departments.
And, and that's why, but no.
But can, but conceptually, the idea is that there will be a hard-defined specified list?
Yes, if we.
And that will lead to, to step.
Exactly.
Yeah, so my intention wasn't to take away people being rewarded for education, it was just the way the policy is written, we were already compensating them at the top by moving them over to the step. Okay, I just wanna make sure.
I'm good with that.
So with the, Jane, and I'll pick on Nate too, since that's the thing, uh, with implementation, um, you know, we go, uh, I guess talking to both y'all, implementation, we go, the current firefighters that already have the bullet point list, they're gonna go ahead and get that extra step in the initial implementation, so we're not kind of restarting what happened in two thousand nine. I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I'm, maybe I misinterpreted. So I did speak with Cassie yesterday, we, we actually met, um, and those people that got traditional education, everybody was taken off the blue line, but they did get steps.
Yes, but for like, and I'm still picking on you, I gotta continue to pick on you, but like, for the fire department, when Nate explained it, he said, well, we didn't get any steps, we just got dropped down to the blue line for our certification.
Cassie gave them all steps.
Okay.
So everybody, regardless of traditional education, certifications or what, she gave everybody steps and steps.
So that's, that's now in the base.
Yes, sir.
But who all didn't turn in the list, I don't know why I'm pointing to Kelly, like she didn't turn in the list, who all didn't turn in the list? Because you can't, you can't really implement.
We need the names to apply it to and that's one of the things we're waiting on from one of the departments.
But there still has to be a list like Nate's list.
Yeah, but we can still approve the plans to implement in January.
Conceptually, we could approve it based on the actual application.
Yes, that, that's what I brought up to you guys yesterday, that, that we still needed to establish the qualified certifications, we haven't had a chance to do.
But the numbers won't match if it's implemented without the list and the names, because.
We won't do it until it's done. We won't implement it that far even until it's-
We just agree to implement it once it's done, which should be the first full pay period in January.
But they, but they still need a deadline because we don't wanna keep holding off because say, we, we, we talked about it implementing the first pay period in January. We don't want Philly to come back and say, well, I forgot to give you rundown stuff and now you owe rundown the money.
No, I think, yeah, we do need to set a date. When does that first full pay period start?
But does that, do you see what I'm saying?
Fifteen, fifteenth, so yeah. I mean, you could look at sometime the week of the ninth.
We've already committed to doing it by mid-January and then we've already, you know, discussed that with Alex, Cassie and my mom.
Yeah, so we could, we could approve the concept tonight and then have everybody on a deadline, first week of January.
That would be great. That'd be perfect.
To turn in their list. And then they can work on implementing them to have it ready to go.
But we still have these things, so it's still everybody's thing.
Yeah, that's why I was just, I mean, I, I wouldn't know what they need to do once you do it.
Um.
Jane, you bring up the evaluations.
Um, hold on. Which one of y'all wants to go first? She can go first. You're talking about the performance, uh, appraisal and requirement?
Yes, ma'am. I wanna make sure everybody's aware.
Okay. Can I please talk to y'all about the performance appraisal? This is a key, key thing that we want to include. First, the anniversary day. We're going to, to, to do the performance appraisal on the anniversary day and issue the, the increase to the employee. The department head will absolutely be required to complete that performance appraisal and they will be required to complete the status change form before any increase can be given. We've got to make sure that you are, it's in the policy, that you are evaluating your employees and letting them know where to stand and where they can grow and develop. Anything else?
Are we going to retro if, say, Chief Johnson fails to turn in?
There will be no more retro in the past, you know, when we've had an error on our part or, you know, the department head couldn't get it in on time. We, we've done that because we didn't wanna penalize the employees. We do have UKG now and once we get all those little reminders set up and you do have your outlook calendar, you just need to put yourself, you'll get a thirty day, thirty day reminder to do the performance appraisal on the UKG. But for now, until we get all that set, you're gonna have to use your own calendars and we'll get you the dates if everybody can need help with that.
Are we, are you going to, um, fix the education policy? Or are we going to touch that?
I don't really see a need. We just amended it to one twenty-third. We need to work on the certifications that the other folks have.
But what, the amendment, amended part was still three, six, nine, correct?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Do we have any steps, whatever the steps are as well, the percentages?
Steps turn out to be two, six.
I was talking about the old pay plan and that's not in the policy. That was just me telling you the differences and the percentages.
Okay, I got you. Got you.
Um, let's see, I'm trying to think of any other questions I had. Um, anybody else got any additional questions? And it's gonna be annual raises, right?
So, oh.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
And will that be put in a policy one, for the resolution, I assume?
I would see one, I would.
Yeah.
I mean, you could, uh, I did, I was looking at something from Mutico today and it would be nice. I know Tuscaloosa did that where they put everything on the Mutico website. And a lot of your rules or regulations, they were talking about pay plans and that kind of thing, so, yeah. Looking for a line, so.
I do have one more thing on the resolution we do when we amend or whatever the funding for this. We need to make sure that we amend exactly the amounts that are taken out of each year mark, like the police year mark on, the fire mark on. And, um, also state that it's for one year, whatever that current year is, and then it goes back to what the resolution was previous. People want to list it, it goes back to X, Y, Z resolution or whatever.
We can do that once, um, we get Cassie to figure out this issue for me. So we don't have the exact numbers today. They're gonna be on by the followers.
Yeah.
And this is Cassie. Well, go ahead and write that out.
But conceptually, since we don't have a resolution ready tonight, we can agree to put it on the next agenda.
Yes, sir. That was the, yes, sir, that's why I sent the email. I just wanted to make sure y'all were aware, um, of why it was on the new resolution.
And then there's still time because that's prior to the pay period.
Yes, so it will start January fifteenth, right, like, week?
Right.
But we can pass the pay plan tonight.
Yes. That would make a lot of people in here happy, I'm sure. Any other questions for Jane?
I don't.
Well, let me just say, we really do appreciate your consideration for the pay plan. Fifteen years old. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work on getting this done.
All right.
You got some more checks, Kelly?
I'll be here.
You got some more checks?
Do you have any same numbers? Do you have provided numbers?
So H R and Nate, will you?
We have to be careful with this. This has got everybody's name on it, so we don't wanna get it circulated.
Yeah.
This is not just the person.
So is Kelly, are you, is, is anyone else, um, hasn't seen numbers along with Kelly?
Reed, have you seen yours?
Is it here?
Well, how?
I thought H R was beating it, but.
And I thought the department heads made this and they signed off on it.
Let me go back. The meeting that we had Monday, I had talked with everybody over the weekend. We didn't have a chance to meet with everybody because we were working on a plan.
So we can approve this tonight, I mean, and we are, I guess we can, if-
And hope they'll approve.
But I mean.
Nothing's changed.
Yeah, it's still, it's still the same.
Nothing's changed if you go with the ECT. It's still the same plan that I discussed with him over the weekend. So that's up to y'all, if y'all wanna wait or-
It's just moving the steps, having removed the ECT to put people in the slot.
But, but yes, it is because, um, you said if we took away the, um, the ECT line, that it was gonna drop some people back down.
It did, but it was minimal. I mean, it was about, what did we say, thirty-six thousand a year?
Versus thirty-eight, so it's, it's three thousand dollar difference.
Yeah.
Between, between with and without.
But it's pretty much the same plan, but, you know, that's really all it's all.
I guess it's thirty-six thousand.
Five thou- five thousand, five thousand dollar difference. Between thirty-three and thirty-eight. So five thousand total, hundred and fifty dollars is around there.
Jane, there might be a couple more questions, um.
Lee, which line are you looking at? I'm sorry.
I'm looking at the total salary difference benefits at the bottom, thirty-three, um, without ECT and thirty-eight with ECT.
No, sir, you're looking at just BSDs. Do you go to the last page and read?
Oh, I'm not looking at the-
Under annual variance?
Okay, got it.
There's a difference of approximately thirty-five thousand dollars with the neutral hours education.
Got it, got it.
Lee's trying to put everything on pause.
Yeah.
That's okay. We all do it.
Alex, Lee, would you like to present funding sources?
Um, as I stated yesterday, it would be a hundred grand from Reed. And then I don't have the other numbers exact because as I stated, the numbers for the police and the fire are off.
Because of the?
Because of the plan itself that we received after accounting and finance looked at the numbers. Um, there's two individuals, one in the police department that is off and one in the fire and one in the animal shelter.
So the numbers have changed a little?
Just a, a minuscule amount, yes. It shouldn't be very much. One pay goes up, one goes down.
It's just not very quick.
We didn't have time, I mean, from the time we got the numbers to the meeting.
So we, we don't need to read?
I would recommend we not read them except police and the fire because that's gonna decide how much money we take from them.
I got you. Then you, we'd have to come back and reread because you'd have, you gotta fix those numbers.
Yes. Upon Cassie's return, we can do all that next week and I can send you guys this email if that's acceptable.
Okay.
And let you know exactly how much. But Reed is the only one that's confirmed at a hundred grand.
I don't feel comfortable with it because they're not provided that. I wish they'd wait to next meeting when she, they had time to do it.
It'll be a very small dollar amount.
Okay.
Because one's going up, police department's going up and one person in the fire department's going down.
Okay.
So it should be a wash. But I, I just don't wanna say I'm gonna take a hundred grand from Chief Johnson when I only need to take eighty or something like that.
I got you.
It's one person from each department.
Okay.
I can read everybody's but police and fire and animal, if that's what you guys would like.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't care either way. Are those numbers off, Ted?
No.
But.
Everybody except animal, police and fire. Everybody else is-
Can we just do a total? We don't have to do each department?
That would be up to Council President. She had asked me originally to do by department.
I would just, I was just, because we're using their tax, um, a lot of that.
So Kelly, are you talking about how much money we're gonna pay for them or how much each, you know, for the pay plan?
How much each is going to cost and how we're funding each individual department? I just want it reiterated to make sure we're all on the same page about.
Well, I'm gonna, um, I, I just wanna make sure I understand. So we're gonna pull the money from the tax dollars and we're just gonna- That's it from one source, right?
Yes.
So we're not paying like, yeah, we're not paying here.
We would reallocate the money from the streets, police and fire.
Yeah, and then just-
And put that in the salary account and then fund the entire budget.
Yeah, okay. She's gonna, she's gonna tell us the updated amount on how much you need to take from those or what. She, um, recalculate those, um, those new departments, right?
Yes, ma'am. I'll send you an email if that's okay.
Okay.
I will text her. I'll text her.
All right. Any additional questions concerning the pay plan?
I, I have just a few and they won't, uh, take long. I, I am thankful that, um, this is done. I guess, I don't know how thankful I am, how quick it was rushed and I do apologize to everybody that it was rushed. I don't, I, that's why, uh, mistakes happen. Alex, tell me one more time, how much this pay plan's gonna, this one, since we reworked the numbers, how much this pay plan's gonna cost?
And, and then also tell them the additional from-
The difference.
Yeah, the difference.
That's right.
Yeah, because it's not, the number you're gonna give is not a new number.
Correct. So if you guys vote for with ECT?
Without.
Without.
Okay, without. Without, each year it's gonna cost approximately one million, nine hundred thousand, sixty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents, give or take the three people that are incorrect.
Sure. This number right here.
That's, that's the addition.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the total.
That's the whole year.
That's the total.
However, there's only three quarters left of this year, so the rest of this year is gonna be seven hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred one dollars and twenty-one cents. And again, that number's gonna be off just a few due to the three bodies that we had to-
So how much do we add total?
I don't have that because I don't know the police and the fire's number.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
How much is this gonna go up every year?
It's gonna go up about a hundred and eighty thousand a year.
Okay, here's my next question. As everybody knows in this room, come April, there's a lot of money, there's a lot of people expecting money back. The chamber, the school, other entities. Are we gonna be able to fulfill our promise that we said we would?
First, we did not promise. We said we would hope.
We would hope.
So, um, secondly, we are not taking any of that money.
Okay.
Because we're using unused salaries, which is already budgeted for.
Okay.
And we're taking the money from the three departments, which they already, they don't have it.
General fund money is not touched.
But the general fund money is not touched.
So we should be okay?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
As long as people keep spending and nothing terrible happens.
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Is that it, everybody?
I'm good.
Now, I just wanna put it out there that, you know, we, we need to get something passed next agenda or not, you know, we need to get this sorted out, done and over with. Because it's not fair to the people who work for the city to keep getting dangled on, you know, I mean, we gotta get something done.
But I mean, we are passing the plan tonight.
Yeah, I, I thought we were, I mean, we're, we're gonna finish.
Well, we don't have a resolution, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
We're just agreeing that it's gonna be on the next agenda for approval.
The plan or the resolution? Or both?
Well, we can.
You saying we can't do the plan without the resolution, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think we need to go ahead and pass it.
We can do the plan and then us from the clerk's office and the H R, which we've been working together, we will get together and figure out the resolution and the wording.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Y'all owe us something.
And we can send you the wording.
Yeah.
Ahead of time.
Plans being the-
Jane, have it ready.
But we don't have, we don't, we don't have the plan.
We don't have it.
We have, we have numbers that are, that are changing.
We have what, numbers that are what?
That are changing. We have concepts, but we don't have a plan.
But-
So you're saying fix those numbers and then pass the plan?
But that, but that makes sense because we have to pass a number two, but what Alex is saying is it's gonna be a minimal amount. And I think they're on the same page to get it done and if we have to-
Well, we could say not to exceed.
Yes, that, that sounds great. Let's do that. Look, let's just go ahead and get it.
But what if it does? Okay, let me-
Have to come back for further discussion.
Let me ask this, Jane. So are you guys trying to just get it done before twenty twenty-three is out? Is that the, is that what you-
Just.
I don't think none of them know.
I think it's gonna be fine. I, I mean, I don't, I don't have any more questions.
Approving it now is, is fine. We just, is there anything extra we need to state with the approval?
But we don't, we don't, we don't have it. We've gotta have some.
We have to have the amount.
Because we don't have, there's still things that are moving and haven't been finalized.
We can't, we can't approve the-
Well, we need to find a way.
X, Y, Z pay plan.
Where's the pay plan? We don't have a pay plan. We have a-
What is this?
This is a list of numbers that are not finalized.
You're saying to get those numbers, you're talking about that ain't ready, get them in here, then pass it, which one of it?
Unless we wanna do something that has a not to exceed because we don't have any exact number.
Let's do the not to exceed.
Yes, let's do that. That's like I said, please do that.
Worst case, we can come back next meeting and then do the, for our vote final.
Wouldn't Alex spend some extra money there?
Well, add a billion dollars.
Alex, take a run of an extra fifty.
I can assure you.
Add a not to exceed amount.
What's the period we're talking, less than four grand? Just round up seven, sixteen?
Okay, I say we go ahead and get it.
Can I just, can I just do a special meeting for this?
One thing you could do is you could say seven sixty and if we're under, we're under. If we go, then we have to discuss it again at another meeting.
Yeah.
Done.
Yep, okay.
What, what jump, what jump wanna do for an hour?
Okay. Okay, are there any additional questions concerning the pay plan? Anybody have anything else? Any department heads, anybody?
No.
Can, can Kelly get his, his numbers? Whoever is responsible.
Alex and Jane, can y'all give Kelly?
Alex and Jane?
Yes. We'll go to my office and get the numbers.
That's what I'm saying, so, 'cause you got an hour, can, y'all can do it in an hour?
Okay.
Are we dismissed?
No, we're not.
Okay.
Okay, so make sure, is there any additional, anything else? Okay, that's it.
I'm done.
All right, um.
Not yet, not yet.
Wait, 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 wait. We, we have not adjourned this, but okay. Well, you're right back into the work session minutes.
Well, we're not, we're not finished. We haven't set the agenda yet.
No, we're not finished. No, we had to extend the agenda. Mr. Rurlo at four, five, four fifty-five. Okay. All right, we also, on new business, we have a public hearing to consider the annexation and zoning of property located at twenty-three Tuscaloosa Avenue, zoned at MX two. Um, item number nine, let's just approve the, um, ordinance two-two-six-three-two-three for annexation of property at twenty-three Tuscaloosa Avenue, zoned MX two. And the city clerks to read the ordinance into the meetings. And then, item number ten, action that is necessary to approve resolution number eighty-one twenty-twenty-three to set public hearing to permanently close the road identified as Skyview Drive. Item number eleven, we have awards for the beautification council. Item number twelve, action that is necessary to appoint John Parrish to the vacated six-year term for the industrial development board sector expire on April of twenty twenty-five. Replacement for the late Judge Mary Vaughn. John was the only applicant. Let's see, we ha- on item number thirteen, we have the appointment of the board of education, five-year term of Melissa Garris, which expired in June of twenty twenty-three. Item number fourteen, action that is necessary to reallocate unexpended- Item number fourteen, action that is necessary to reallocate unexpended funds in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and one dollars and seventy-one cents from FY twenty-three bond proceeds for Silicaga Parks and Rec to upgrade South Highland Park, funded previously approved by city council at the May sixteenth twenty twenty-three city council meeting. Item number fifteen, action that is necessary to approve FY twenty-four funding for South Highland Park in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and one dollars and seventy-one cents for Silicaga Parks and Rec funding from bronze bond proceeds, it sounds like the same item, but it's two different items. Item number sixteen, action that is necessary to approve request recommendation from human resource specialist Jane McGee to authorize unused vacation leave resulting from dark departmental staffing shortages to be carried forward to twenty twenty-four. And we're gonna cancel that.
We don't, no, we discussed, we need to amend it.
Or we're gonna, we're gonna amend it, I'm sorry, that's the one that.
We'll do that in between, or six.
We'll, we'll fix that, we'll fix that.
Yeah, we'll fix that between. Seventeen, Chairman, um, let's see, action that is necessary to approve zero fifty retail beer, all purposes only, and zero seventy retail table wine, all purposes only, application from Stephen Grant, Sutherland Chief Executive Officer of Doll Gin Corp LLC and Emily Christine Taylor LLC, manager of Doll Gin Corp LLC located at fourteen thirty Talladega Highway in Silicaga. Item number nineteen, action that is necessary to approve, we're gonna have to rework.
Yeah, but you're still gonna approve.
Yeah, we're gonna, okay, approve citywide pay plan for retention and improvement purposes. And then we'll delete city clerk treasurer, yeah. And then we got action necessary to approve FY twenty-three accounts payable invoices. Item number twenty-one, action that is necessary to approve FY twenty-four account payable invoices. Number twenty-two, action that is necessary to approve November payroll in the amount of one hundred sixty-six thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars and eleven cents, and.
And Ms. Lambert, does this, does, does this take care of any accounts payable concerns that we caught up with after this?
Oh, yes, sir, we're all caught up.
Okay.
It's the council.
Hey, what, what act, what specifically does she need to amend, sixteen two vacation?
If it was the cash, was the cash out?
Cash out by the end of the year.
Are we rolling any, Lee?
I thought the plan was not to roll any because it would be used at a different rate than it was on.
Right, because.
So those people that should not be selling, are you guys operating them to sell?
Yes, because we want, we don't want to have a more expensive option in the future.
So does any department have any that's not on this list? I guess that's the question.
Did everybody turn their hours in?
No, it's not, but I mean, we just, we pass that, then everybody, every department knows that, hey, you got them.
That's right.
So, so.
They said yours, then all, then all magic will roll over.
Yes, it's yours, yes.
I, like I've got, one that, he just came off parole, he's got a police cap, he'll have a chance to take it on.
Yeah.
See, well, he's got it set to take half a year.
His will automatically roll, Kevin?
He's, they've already been told, they can automatically roll over.
So I, that, I think that's what we made a date.
I've got two, I've got two that one has, one has circled, you see it?
Is, so, is, is, is that kind of, you okay, are we gonna end up in some sort of trouble by letting, I mean, I don't know, I'm just trying to make sure that we good?
Make sure the new hires are.
Yeah, the new hires, this policy remains in effect for new hires.
It's not really considered a roll over, it's just their end of probation.
Okay.
Okay, and I think that's what's confusing, everybody's calling it roll over, um.
Sounds good. And then, do you know the exact need to amend for the pay plan voting?
I think it's the same.
It works.
Just the word.
It works. We just take out the part of the city clerk reading the numbers in.
I think that's good.
Don't know, unless, unless you get something, if you get something.
Yeah, well, she said to get those numbers to join. I think we're good, let's, let's adjourn the work session, we will not begin our council meeting until six P M. because we do have a public hearing that starts at six P M.
Can I see Ed Ford, Red, Kelly, Jane?